Betty, can you hear me?
Yes, Councilmember Tate, we could hear you very well.
Okay, thank you.
You guys ready? Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is April 20th, 2022. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the invocation of Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, we thank you so much for this opportunity to serve our beautiful city and our residents. We ask today that you keep the family and friends of former Councilmember Rick Williams in everyone's prayers. And... And we want to also say to you, Lord, to comfort His family and His friends. We ask that you continue to keep our firstborn founders safe. We ask that you continue to keep all of us walking in your path with courage and faith and love and light. In Your Son's name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long has indicated he will be arriving after roll call, and I will mark him excused. Mayor Gunther?
Here.
Councilmembers Cosden?
Here.
Hayden?
Nelson?
Here.
Shepherd?
Here.
Tate?
Here.
Welsh?
Here.
Seven present, one excused.
Thank you. Is there a motion to allow Councilmember Tate to appear remotely tonight?
So moved.
Any council discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Seven ayes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. Item five is changes to the agenda. The only change that I would like to move is under nine D, new business, naming of the new fireboat. I would like to move that up until directly after citizens' input. Is there any other changes to the agenda or items to add? Is there a motion to approve the agenda with the change?
So moved.
Second. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, item seven is approval of the minutes. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the regular meeting of April 6th, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is item eight. I'm sorry, Councilmember Shepherd, I see your light on.
I wanted to bring up to have an extension for voting for the charter school board. Give more time for more people to apply.
So we would have to add that to the agenda, maybe under new business or business. Madam City Attorney, since we've already approved that agenda, what will we have to do?
Well, you can move to amend it, but I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said in terms of what his change is. What is the change?
I wanted to be able to advertise a little longer to get more applicants. We really didn't...
For the charter school governing board?
Yeah.
I think maybe that's something that can be discussed when the item comes up.
Okay.
That he has concerns about actually committing to the appointment tonight.
Okay.
Would that satisfy your concerns?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, we'll have that discussion first, once we get to that item. Councilmember Nelson, I see your light on.
Well, I was gonna respectfully disagree, but if we're gonna wait and talk about it during that, I'll hold my thoughts.
All right then. Item eight of citizens' input, a maximum of 60 minutes, is set for the input of citizens on matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. You have one opportunity to participate in citizens' input. Anyone that wishes to participate, we will utilize the podium to the left in front of the double doors. Please come forward.
Mayor and Council, my name is Jerry Presley. I am president of U.S. Operations for Creative Outdoor Advertising of America. Our address is 8875 Hidden River Parkway Suite 300, Tampa, Florida. I'm coming before you today to speak in regards to consent agenda item A4, Resolution 70-22, which is the approval of an interlocal agreement between the city of Cape Coral and Lee County or Lee Tran, which is designed to authorize a contract between the parties for the provision of public seating services with advertising at area bus stops. We have previously submitted comments and concerns to the city, writing a letter back in June of this year expressing our disapproval of this initiative and effort. We've made it very clear that our opposition is based on the grounds that the proposed contract clearly violates the statutory intent of Florida 337.408, which expressly states that a governing authority where such infrastructure is to be placed, meaning the city of Cape Coral, can only legally authorize a qualified private supplier to provide the proposed services. For more than 70 years in the state of Florida, public seating has been provided through unique public-private partnership initiatives here in the state of Florida. And for more than 60 years, the state legislature has enshrined within this Florida statute this requirement of encouraging the public-private partnership initiatives for the provision of the public seating. Under this contract, the city would be entering into an agreement with Lee County and/or Lee Tran, or via Lee Tran, and Lee County is not a private entity. It is a public entity. And because it is a public entity, it is not qualified under the private-public partnership initiatives created by the state legislature under this initiative to be providing these services. COA is a private company. We have offered to the city over two years ago to fully renovate the public seating program on behalf of the city, replacing all of the old infrastructure with brand-new modern metal infrastructure that was fully compliant with ADA and FDOT safety design standards at absolutely no cost to the community. And that initiative was rejected earlier this year so that you guys could enter into this public partnership agreement with the county, simply because the city wanted to abdicate its responsibilities and authorities that can only be granted through the Florida statute to grant it over to the county. And so with that, we actually respectfully request that the city discontinue the pursuit of this and allow for the private-public partnership initiative to go forward as you've done for over 40 years in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council, Lou Navara, 48-year resident, Cape Coral. I'm here to talk about dual water. We can't see the picture because I didn't get to see Ms. Brunz, but I've got landfront property now, beach property, because the lakes are so far down, and that's the fault of the old councils and you too. In 1991, we were told we would never have to bother with dual water. It was unlimited every day. Now I heard you want to make it once a day. You need to fix that. You've disregarded the environment. You just don't really care. Now, Mr. Mazurkowitz was mayor, and he will back up, and I have respect for that man. I may not care for everything his business does, but he's smart. He knows we had unlimited water, but you keep changing the rules because you've just gone berserk with building, and there's no care for the environment. I'm gonna suggest that you change it. The people that had to pay in 1991, we should get unlimited water, and then you take that back fairly. And if you want it once a day, voila, start it with your next assessment. I was disappointed with the tax on electricity that you did. We spoke about it. Some people can't afford it. They live on 550 kilowatts. Why couldn't you have talked to Joe Mazurkowitz? He's on the money council for the school board, but you don't want to negotiate with anything. You know what the saying's gonna be? If we can't negotiate, tax them. And that's us, the city constituency here. We're tired of... I'm tired of the taxes. Maybe they like them. I have no idea, Mayor, but you all just go in. And number eight says here, this is a real funny one, and sorry, Kimberly, there's a picture. There's no discussion for the... I'll find it. Give me a second here. Anyway, for the 10 minutes to petition the board, well, Mayor, you shot me down, and I didn't like it, and when I wanted to talk to you, you said you wouldn't even consider what I wanted to talk about. I had a lot of issues, and you gave me 15 minutes. Real magnanimous of you, Mayor and Council. I'm gonna resend my request. I don't expect to be turned down. First Amendment, we have a right. You all make up these silly rules in violation of the charter. We can't show you this paper because it's gotta be signed. I might have said a bad word on it. We can't say Mayor Gunther. No.
Thank you, Mr. Navara.
We might as well all call you guys Your Majesty.
Thank you.
You're quite welcome. This isn't going away, though, Mayor or Council. You're moving in the wrong direction.
Thank you, Mr. Navara.
Yes, you're welcome.
Anybody else wishing to participate in citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Is there any council discussion on citizens' input? Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, for the public purposes, to comment on the last speaker, I don't think there's anybody up here on this council who doesn't care about the environment, including water quality, because all of us realize the detriment to having not pay attention to environmental issues that it will cause to our local economy because of our ecotourism that we have, our beaches, our waters, our canals, and our boating. So I just wanted to say that publicly. I know that our mayor works very hard with the task force of other mayors, along with county commissioners, to bring especially water quality issues to the forefront. And yes, I think that we are paying attention to the environment when we are asking folks to conserve water and asking folks to utilize a schedule when watering their lawns. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Councilmember Long?
Madam City Attorney, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyways. Am I to assume that because this item is on the consent agenda with regards to the bus advertisements, that the city attorney's office position is different than the gentleman that spoke with regards to the city's violation of the statute as written?
It is... We do have a different opinion. Please note that the statute is untested. There has been no case interpreting it. However, the interlocal agreement that you have before you is very much in line with the other municipalities in Lee County, so it would not... We would not be taking a different position than theirs. None of theirs have been challenged, which doesn't mean that ours would not be. But as I said, the statute is untested, but we do have a different interpretation than the gentleman who spoke.
Thank you, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item 9A as the consent agenda. I'll now open up the consent agenda for council to pool any items for discussion. Oh, that's right. I'm sorry, I didn't make that note. Appreciate you bringing that to my attention. We'll now move to item 9D, new business, naming of the new fireboat. I apologize, Chief Lamb. So we'll give you the floor for the next topic of discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ryan Lamb, Fire Chief. Thank you for taking this item up. Thank you to the city manager for the review of it as well. We're grateful to have a new fireboat as part of the city resources in response. It's a great boat. Again, thank you for your support in getting it. Naming fireboats is something that hasn't been prevalently done in our fire department, but it's something done nationally, and I think it's something that's important. If you look around, most military and paramilitary organizations naming boats, it's a tradition. It's some considerate luck and a tradition to do. And so typically, when we look at those boats, they're named after important people that are associated with the service of that boat. And so the proposal that is before you for your consideration tonight is to name that boat in honor of retired battalion chief Todd Ragoni. We're grateful to have Todd here with us tonight. Todd retired from the CCFD after 30 years of service to our city. He's also a Air Force veteran, proud Air Force veteran. He's got tattoos to prove it. So under Todd's time here with the city, he worked in many capacities, eventually promoting to the rank of battalion chief assigned to special operations. I had the privilege of working with him as a supervisor during that time and know that this was one of his last projects that he took on, was looking at replacing these boats, noticing where our boats were, the disrepair, and he would personally go out and continually work on fixing those boats and making sure they were up and ready, and identifying, based off of his marine expertise, the things that needed to be put into our new boats. And so he was the inspiration behind these boats that now we get to see as reality. This was his dream, his passion, that we get to see come forward. So I believe it's fitting that this boat be named in his honor. Our plan is that if city council provides direction tonight and it comes back for introduction and ordinance hearing on the 18th, that shortly thereafter, we would have an in-place or ceremony of putting that boat in service with an environmentally sensitive bottle to christen across the front of the boat. And in future, we know we also have another boat coming, and we have a proposal for that for one of our line-of-duty desks that wanted to recognize it's important for our city and especially the fire department to make sure we honor and have a good tradition and heritage that makes sure that those in the past don't just drift away with it, that we can honor those people that gave a lot to our city. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Sounds like that the chief is looking basically for consensus tonight.
Well, you can vote to give the city attorney's office direction to prepare an ordinance that would name the fireboat in accordance with the chief's request.
Okay. First, I'd like to thank you for all your service to our community and your dedication over the years, and I think it would be fitting to be able to name the fireboat after you because of all the service that you did to our city. So thank you very much. So I would definitely be in favor of it.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
And I look forward to being at that ceremony. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item 9A as the consent agenda. I'll now open the consent agenda for council to pool any items for discussion. If there's no items to be pooled, is there a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the consent.
No.
Sounds like we have a motion. Councilmember Tate, are you a second?
I am.
Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item 9B, appointments to boards and committee. B1 is the audit committee. We have two vacancy. We have a regular meeting member vacancy and a alternate member vacancy. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Your Honor, we received three applications for the appointments this evening, and all applicants are present today. We have Jill Hyatt, Susan Lewis, and Harvey Wolfson. Please note, for Ms. Hyatt, she is a current member of the grievance committee and will require a two-thirds vote if she is selected. If council would like, I can call the applicants to the podium for an interview.
Yes, please do. Do we want to give one or two minutes? One minute? So we'll give each candidate one minute? Okay.
All right, Jill Hyatt?
Hi, I'm Jill Hyatt. I used to be on the audit committee. I was a previous chair and a vice chair, and then I took some time off, and I'm on the grievance committee, but we have never met in the eight years or whatever I've been on it. I'm not even sure how long I've been on it. And I was contacted by the current chair because there were some openings, and she wasn't sure there would be enough applicants, and I expressed interest, so here I am again. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much, ma'am.
Susan Lewis?
Hi, I'm Susan Lewis. I moved here permanently in May and have owned a condo here for three years. I retired as the chief financial officer of a Native American museum in Indianapolis, Indiana, who are not for... They were not-for-profit, the Adelger Museum of American Indians and Western Art, and I was the audit liaison for the 23 years that I worked there. And currently, I am the treasurer of our Blue Water Cove Condo Association, and just have an accounting background. Oh, I'm a CPA, Indiana CPA, and just was able to become a Florida CPA recently.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Ms. Lewis? Councilmember Nelson?
So, Ms. Lewis, you've said you've owned property here for three years?
Yes.
So you would come back and forth, and you just moved here permanently?
Yes.
Welcome. Well, I'm really grateful that you applied for this board. I always like to see when we have new faces, not to disrespect any of our folks over here who've done their duty and been volunteers, but I really appreciate you applying. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other discussions from council? Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Harvey Wolfson?
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Harvey Wolfson, and I've been a member of the audit committee, oh, probably for the last 10 years. I was chairman of the audit committee for two or three years. I was also on the budget review committee, so I'm very familiar with the city of Cape Coral. I've lived here for eight years... Excuse me, I've lived here for 12 years now, and I'm a certified internal auditor. I am a certified fraud examiner and a systems auditor. If you have any questions or comments, please.
Any question for the applicant? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Councilmember Nelson?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, Madam City Clerk, it looks like that's the only three applicants?
Yes.
And we have a regular members position that's open and an alternate, so I guess what we'll do is go down the list for the regular member first and the voting order that we have tonight?
Yes, sir. Nelson?
Wolfson.
Shepherd?
Wolfson.
Tate?
Wolfson.
Welsh?
Wolfson.
Cosden?
Wolfson.
Gunther?
Wolfson.
Hayden?
Wolfson.
Long?
Wolfson.
So that is eight for Wolfson.
Okay, so do we have a motion to appoint Mr. Wolfson?
So moved.
Second.
That's for the regular member position?
Correct.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, now we'll go down the list for the alternate position.
Nelson?
Lewis.
Shepherd?
Lewis.
Tate?
Lewis.
Welsh?
Lewis.
Cosden?
Lewis.
Gunther?
Lewis.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long? All right, so that's one for Hyatt and seven for Lewis.
I'll make the motion to appoint Ms. Lewis as the alternate.
Second.
Any discussion? Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunther?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
And Ms. Hyatt, thank you very much for putting your name in. As you know, we have many committees throughout our organization, so please feel free to apply for one of the other committees or a future position on this audit committee. So thank you. Okay, the next item is the charter school governing board. I know Councilmember Shepherd had some discussion he wanted to have prior to this topic of discussion, so I'll turn the floor over to him to start with.
I just think this is a very important position, the board for the charter school, and I believe that the amount of time that it was advertised was too short. When someone sees a position like this advertised, I think it takes a lot of thought before they apply because of the type of position it is. It's not a quick decision that someone can make, you know, in a couple days. And because we don't have an abundance of people applying, we only have two for the two, I thought it would be a good idea to give it a little bit more time advertising it. I've had people contacting me with interest, but they said it was too late to apply because of such a short span of advertisement and time to get in their application. So I don't think it's gonna hurt anything by extending the time, and that's my only reason. I'm nothing against the people that already applied. I just think it's an important position, and I want to give more people the opportunity and time to vet it and apply, and that's it.
Mr. Mayor, may I speak when you get a chance?
Yeah, hold on. Madam City Clerk, could you inform council exactly the process that you utilize to advertise this position in the timeframe?
So the charter school governing board is handled by the charter school and the Oasis representatives, and they have forwarded the information to us that they advertised in the breeze two times in February and four times in March. It's also posted on the city's website, and a social media outlet goes out at the first... around the first day of each month to notify. So that would have been a notification for March and I believe for April 1st as well. We collect applications and are available when residents call with any questions.
So it sounds like we started the process in sometime in February?
February 23rd.
February 23rd and ended?
Roughly the 25th. Actually, I don't have the exact date, but we, under council direction, we post all vacancies for a minimum of 30 days.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Nelson? Counsel member Nelson?
Thank you, Mayor. I respectfully disagree with you, counsel member Shepherd, because of the reason that the city clerk just stated and that this position was adequately advertised. And I would agree with you if we didn't have two incredible applications. I mean, Ms. Adizel, I hope I'm saying that correctly, she's a public defender. I mean, that's awesome, and I understand possibly a parent. So bonus, bonus. And Dr. Manaya, double bonus. I mean, do you know him? I mean, he is amazing, and he's already the chair, and he's done a fantastic job. So with that, I mean, if we didn't have these two stellar candidates, I would wholeheartedly agree with you, but we do. So I wouldn't support it. I'm going to support putting these two on to let them do their fine work because they bring much-needed diversity to this board, and their backgrounds clearly tell me and everybody that they can handle all walks of life, and they have that experience, and I think it's needed. So that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Counsel member Welsh?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to pretty much second what councilwoman Nelson said, not as emphatically. I wanted to add that although they both qualify for the positions, I do see Dr. Manaya as one, as a business community member more so than a public defender since he has a business here in Cape Coral. So my recommendation with these two applicants would be to put Dr. Manaya on the business community member and Estelle as the community at-large member. Thank you.
Counsel member Tate?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would disagree with counsel member Shepherd. It was advertised for more than a month and a half, and if you include the advertising on our website, it was much longer. Secondly, we have a board meeting coming up on May 12th, and we have a budget workshop for the entire year coming up. It is imperative that we have qualified applicants, which you can see in front of you, to attend this session. And we cannot wait to advertise longer when we're working on our budget for the coming year. As you know, we've moved up our budget schedule, so it's imperative that we have active board members. Dr. Manaya is the chair of our board and does an outstanding job. We must have him as a board member to lead our budget discussion. And the other candidate is extremely qualified, as well as being a parent and very active in the school. So I would support both of these applicants, and I would hopefully request that this council move forward and not deny these applicants at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel member Shepherd?
No, just once again, like I said at first, I am in no way saying that the candidates that we have already aren't fabulous. That wasn't my intent. What I was basically responding to is citizens that came forward that thought it wasn't advertised long enough. So, you know, a lot of people don't read the breeze. You know, a lot of, you know, advertising is changing. More people look at social media, things like that. So I just, you know, as a representative of our citizens, I just wanted to make sure that we were vetting thoroughly. So there was no intent against the applicants here. It was just, if it wasn't a big deal to add 30 days, I didn't, you know, then it wouldn't be a problem. But if my fellow councilmembers think that 30 days is really important, then, you know, I agree.
Counsel member Long?
Madam City Clerk, can you, you might have already said it. Can you state, when did the application period close for this particular?
So I apologize, I don't have that detail handy.
But typically, once it's in the newspaper for the last run, it's at least one more week.
So the 3/25 date, I would just, I would make the...
So that's typical, that you would leave about a one-week buffer from when we see it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it sounds like majority of counsel is willing to move forward today, so that's what we'll do. Unless someone wants to make a motion, we'll continue. We have the charter school governing board. Apparently, it's two vacancies. We have two applicants. Madam City Clerk?
So I heard a recommendation from counsel member Welsh, but I have not done a motion yet.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint...
Oh, second. Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Dr. Manaya as the business community member and the other applicant as the at-large member.
I'll second.
Any counsel discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to item nine C, unfinished business. Any follow-up items for counsel? I don't see anything listed. Does counsel have any follow-up items? Seeing none, we'll move on to item nine D, which is new business for the naming of the boat. We moved that up earlier, so we've already had that particular discussion. Nine E, personnel actions. We do not have any listed. We do not have any petitions to counsel's listed. So we'll move on to item nine G, follow-up items for city management. G1 is water quality up to date. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of city council. It's time for your regular update on water quality issues surrounding the Cape. So I'm going to ask the staff from the Public Works Department, led by Michael Ilchizen, the Public Works Director, and Dr. Maya Robert, to come to the podium and provide you with the latest report. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Maya Robert, Public Works. The stage of Lake Okeechobee is recessing, and it's a good news because with that comes less discharges for this summer. And so we've been very happy with what the Corps have been giving us. They've scaled back the releases further last Friday to account for spawning of fisheries resources. And so there's no blue energy blooms on the lake or along the Kalusahatchie River, no red tide in southwest Florida at the moment. And so this month has been declared Water Conservation Month by the South Florida Water Management District, and the city is partnering with the district. And we really encourage residents to adopt the district's tips to conserve water. As you may know, about 50% of the state resources are dedicated to irrigation. And we encourage the practice of Florida-friendly landscaping practices to conserve water. There will be a annual native plant sale at Rotary Park this Saturday, and there will be information regarding this program. If there are any questions?
Thank you. Any questions for the water quality? Mr. Ilchizen?
Good evening, Mayor and counsel. Just a quick update on the bubble curtains. As you know, we have 10 sites that we are permitting through the Corps to install curtains. Staff has initiated the upland work, so this is just a quick update on the upland work. Two of the 10 sites have all of the electrical components installed, have been inspected by our city inspectors, have passed inspection, and have electrical meters on site, so those two are ready to go. Three of them have had the electrical work installed. City passed inspections. We're just waiting on meters from LCEC. That's five, so that's five out of the 10. Two of them have the electrical work installed and awaiting inspection. Once the inspection pass, we'll put those forward to LCEC to be, to put the meter in. And then we have a couple of properties on the very north end of the system that the state DEP believed that they were basically on, we were on state property, so we haven't been able to do any upland work there yet until we get the DEP's, you know, clearance that we're not. We've provided them information in their request for additional information that our stuff is going to be outside of their property, but their survey team is still kind of wrestling with that. But we're moving right along. We're basically on hold for a couple of inspections and a couple of meter drops, and that will take care of basically eight out of the 10 sites that we could get as far ahead as we could. And as soon as the DEP releases the last two at the very north end of the system, we'll make that work done. And then we're just waiting on the Corps to release for the internal, in-water work.
Thank you. Any discussions from Mr. Ilchizen? Okay, thank you for the update. Before we move on to public hearings, Madam City Clerk, you gave me a note regarding an individual that had making some type of request. Do you know what the topic of discussion is?
I do not, Your Honor. A resident came to us before the meeting started and asked for the process for speaking. We shared that Citizens Input is on number eight on the agenda and that there's a certain timeframe, and it's at the beginning of the meeting. And I think he must have stepped out of the room and missed the timeframe, and he has approached the clerk's desk to see if he can still have an opportunity to speak. So I put it to you.
And Madam City Attorney, is there any problem with, given this, even though we've closed Citizens Input, can we open that back up for discussion and let this resident at least have his three minutes?
That's a matter for the counsel. If the counsel wants to go ahead and allow it, you can.
Okay. Does counsel have any problem with that? You know, I figured the individual at least made this...
For this individual?
For this individual. Yes. No problem with that? Sir? You have three minutes? Please stand at the podium. You're the individual that... Right there at the podium? You're the individual, correct?
Thank you for reconsidering me. I'm not really familiar with how this works.
Please state your name to start with.
Okay, it's Dan Agostino, 3810 Southwest 7 Place 33914. The corrosive quality of Cape Coral tap water that causes constant calcium damage and have to replace all the fixtures every one to three years. A chemical reaction caused by calcium attacks the glue connection at the main line. This happened two times. Plumbing leaked six months ago and a second leak recently due to a recent billing changes. I never received a March 10 bill in a timely fashion. There was suspect of a leak until it was too late. As a remedy, I was given a charity form to pay the bill. I'm returning the money, because it's not fair for a charity to pay for this. I am asking the city to eliminate a time limit on leaks caused by calcium. I am also asking the city to meet the citizens halfway, 50/50 on the loss. I have a quick survey. I can have a showing of hands. Do you drink bottled water and filtered water most of the time? Please raise your hand if you do. I'm addressing everybody. Okay? Do you drink tap water most of the time? Do you think that city tap water is safe to drink? I grant the remainder of the time to the city council and the people in this room for questions. I'd like to hear some kind of response. It would be nice. It's not a funeral. There you go. I got two minutes left.
A minute and 15 seconds, but is that all your...
I'm very hard of hearing, I'm sorry.
Is that all your input? Because what I'll do is ask staff...
Yeah, I'm asking for a raise of hands, for, you know, some kind of reaction from everybody. What do you think about that?
Well, we don't have that type of discussion unless a specific council member would like to weigh in on your topic of discussion. They may. If not, maybe we'll direct you to staff, your concerns to staff, to address any concerns that you may have reference to our drinking.
What is SAP?
Staff or the men and women who are employed here at the city of Cape Coral.
Well...
The employees.
I spoke to Bill Boyd, and he has no control over the problem, and he said to go to city council.
Counsel member Shepherd?
Yeah, I just want to answer...
I just don't think it's fair I have to go to a charity to pay for the bill. I think that the city should meet the people halfway on a loss of water due to calcium corrosion.
Okay.
And it happens constantly.
Let's give counsel member Shepherd the opportunity to weigh in on your discussion.
Well, I will.
And this is not a two-way conversation. You've already had your three minutes.
Well, you know, I'm not familiar with the process. Please excuse me and forgive me.
Okay. Go ahead, counsel member Shepherd.
That was all I wanted to say, is that our water is very safe, but the type of water it is, it's hard, and that's why some people have to buy softeners. But I'm sure that someone from Water Department can talk to you and educate you on our water, so you have the confidence that it's safe. The other problems, someone from staff can probably educate you on, but I want the public to know that we have very safe, clean water and that the things you're experiencing or the nature of our water, that someone can explain to you, you know, why it's hard on our plumbing.
Mr. City Manager, can you get staff to get with this individual?
Mr. Mayor, we're happy to have Mr. Jeff Pearson and his staff speak to this gentleman outside.
Okay.
How are we?
Thank you.
Thank you. Just step outside, staff will talk, happy to talk to you.
Okay, we'll move on to public hearings, item 10A. We have ordinance 30-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 30-22, an ordinance providing for the annexation of a parcel of land lying in Section 16, Township 44 South, Range 23 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, providing for redefinition of city boundaries, providing for city of Cape Coral Fire Department and Utility Services, providing for severability and an effective date.
Due to the nature of this matter, anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Chad?
Okay. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. For the record, Chad Boyko, principal planner with the city's planning division. This is ordinance for an annexation privately initiated. Okay, the applicant for this is CCTC Fee Owner LLC. The size of the site is 2.65 acres. It's a little bit north of Pineland Road and west of Burnt Store Road. The urban services area would be in the transition upon annexation, and then the applicant's request is to annex one parcel into the city of Cape Coral boundaries. Some quick findings of fact for you. The site is undeveloped and consists of one parcel. It's landlocked, however, the site is owned to the, the site is, shares ownership with a large parcel that is located to the west. It is anticipated that this parcel would be incorporated into a future development at that site. It's adjacent to the city on three sides, the north, the east, and the west. To the south, there is still a parcel that is within, unincorporated, Lee County. The applicant has stated desire to develop commercial uses by assembling this into land owned by that neighboring parcel. And then they have also filed a future land use map amendment to bring this parcel into the Pineland Road District's future land use classification. For service provisions, the city of Cape Coral Utilities Department has stated that sewer service is available to serve this site, and we have also received a letter from Lee County stating that they will relinquish any right to serve this property for sewer. The site is served by the Greater Pineland Water Association, and there's a length of time where they have the ability to serve this site in the future. They could, however, choose to also relinquish that right to serve, and then the city of Cape Coral would serve that site with water. The police department has stated that the annexed site will be served by the city's police, and likewise, the same will be done with the fire department. They have capacity to serve this site as well. Staff's recommendation is approval, and I stand by for any further questions.
Now, public hearing? If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 30-22, please come forward.
Good evening, Linda Miller, Vice President of Avalon Engineering, representing the property owner, CCTC Fee Owner LLC. We're excited about bringing this annexation forward to you tonight. It is only 2.65 acres, but it will be combined with another 128 acres for a large mixed-use development, town center kind of development that we're working on. This is one of the first steps that are required for this. We will bring a land use map amendment forward, a rezoning map amendment forward, and a replat prior to getting site plan approval and building approval. We stand by to answer any questions you may have and ask for your approval.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on...
Mayor, City Council, I just, one point of correction in my presentation. This site is actually east of Burnt Store Road. I think there was one slide where it said that it was west of Burnt Store Road, so I just want to make that correction and get that on record.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wishing to speak on ordinance 30-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 30-22?
I'd like to make a motion to approve ordinance dash, 30-22.
Second.
Is there any counsel discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Thank you. Ordinance 36-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 36-22, an ordinance amending Ordinance 132-05 as amended by ordinances 31-12 and 48-19, which approved a planned development project in the city of Cape Coral, Florida, entitled Judd Creek, that established the Judd Creek Preserve subdivision on property described as a tract or parcel of land situated in the state of Florida, county of Lee, lying in Sections 3 and 4, Township 44 South, Range 24 East, together with Lot 22, Lot 27, and Lot 33A, Mariana Park, Third Edition, as more particularly described herein. Property located at the southeast corner of northeast Pine Island Road and Barrett Road, approving the removal of property described as tracks 1A, 1B, 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 6, 7A, 7B, 9, 10, and 11, Judd Creek Preserve, Lot 22, Mariana Park, and Lot 8B, Springs at Cape Coral, as more particularly described herein, from the planned development project, providing for findings of fact and conclusions of law, providing for action on request and conditions of approval, providing severability and an effective date.
This is a quasi-judicial hearing. Anyone wishing to speak or provide testimony must be sworn in.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Struve.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers for the record, Mike Struve with the city Planning Division. My credentials are available through the city clerk's office. This case involves a private request to eliminate or remove property from the Judd Creek Plan Development Project, or PDP. Three owners making this request are listed on this slide. The area requested to be removed by these three owners collectively is about 155 acres and constitutes about 80 percent of the land area within this PDP. I think most of you are aware of where Judd Creek is, but it is located in eastern Cape Coral, has frontage along Pine Island Road, and is located just west of US 41. This aerial slide here shows the Judd Creek area outlined in red. There has been a couple of projects that have gone through permitting and have been approved. One multifamily project located on the west side of the project, known as the Springs Development. There's actually a second project that has also received approval, south of that project called Calusa Creek, which is also a multifamily project. And then, one site, smaller site, located on the north side of the project area, which is a racetrack, convenience store, and gas station. Judd Creek was originally approved back in 2005. It was a mixed-use PDP, consisted of about 192 acres. Like a lot of the larger projects that were approved during that time period, it stalled and sort of languished for several years. In 2012, that project was amended, and that amendment consisted of replating a portion of the project area and approving a gas station use where the racetrack development is now located. More recently, the project was again amended in 2019, and that approved a replat of Track 8, which was a large, or is a large, multifamily track on the west side of the project area, and also approved construction of the Springs Development, and likewise, later on, the Calusa Creek Development. There are maximum development standards that are established for the Judd Creek Preserve, both by Ordinance 13205 and also by the Judd Creek Subdistrict. And while the numbers are somewhat similar, they do differ. And this applies to development in a collective sense. The Judd Creek PDP caps the number of residential units that can be developed collectively throughout the PDP at 1,100 dwelling units and caps the amount of commercial development that can occur across the project area to a total of 200,000 square feet. The Judd Creek Subdistrict, which is separate from the PDP and appears in our comprehensive plan, has somewhat similar caps, but does allow for greater numbers of dwelling units, 1,170, and allows for a maximum of 250,000 square feet. What this means is, if you were to approve the developers' request this evening, the caps established by Ordinance 13205 for Judd Creek would be eliminated, but the developers would need to comply with those caps for residential density and commercial intensity that are still established in the Judd Creek Subdistrict. This is a zoning map showing the various zoning designations that are represented within the project. There's about 117 acres that are zoned RML, or Residential Multifamily Low, indicated in the brown, about 50 acres that are zoned AG, indicated in the green, and about 25 acres with commercial corridor zoning that is indicated in the pink. You'll also notice that there is a green line around the Judd Creek area. That demonstrates our, or shows our 500-foot proximity boundary. And I point that out just to mention that this shows the area in which we mailed notices to. We mailed notices to all property owners within the project area itself, and then to all property owners within 500 feet of the project area. Most of those owners live in unincorporated Lee County. In addition to that, we also mailed a letter to Lee County Department of Community Development as required by our code. We posted signs on the site, and we placed an ad in the newspaper, which is also required by our regulations. This aerial is very similar to the one you looked at earlier, but this more clearly shows the areas that are requested to be removed by the developers. All the areas that you see here in red would be removed from the Judd Creek PDP. The areas that show up as clear or unfiltered parcels are the areas that would remain in the PDP. And there are three different tracks that would remain within the PDP if the developer's request is approved this evening. One is the Springs Development on the west side of the project. The second is the Racetrack Development referred to earlier. And then the third parcel is a much smaller parcel. It's directly adjacent to the Racetrack parcel to the east, and it's a small right-of-way track that is improved and leads to the signalized intersection. There are several issues you may want to consider as you debate whether or not this request should be approved. Judd Creek originally was a unified project. It was owned by a single property owner, and that was Realmark Judd Creek LLC. Over the years, that, various pieces of the Judd Creek development have been sold off to different entities, and now there are currently five different property owners in that development. And to some extent, what that means is, is that these different property owners have different visions on how their property should be developed, and some of those visions do not comport with the existing development orders that are in place. It doesn't mean that they're trying to develop those properties inconsistently with our land use and development regulations or with our comprehensive plan, but in some cases, it does mean that they are looking to develop their properties inconsistent with the master plan that was approved originally for that Judd Creek development in terms of the style of the development or in terms of a particular use in a particular zoning district. Staff has evaluated this request, and we found that access to the Judd Creek parcels will not be affected. Should these properties be eliminated, utility services will not be affected. This request will not create any nonconformities, and by that, I mean it will not create any illegal or nonconforming lots or uses, and to our knowledge, will not create any nonconforming buildings. Eliminating the conditions in the existing development order should not have any harmful impact on properties either within the project area or outside the project area. And should this request be approved, future development as well as redevelopment in the Judd Creek area for those properties that are eliminated from the project area would be governed by the provisions appearing in the Land Development Code as well as those caps on residential development and commercial intensity that appear in the Judd Creek Subdistrict in our comprehensive plan. Staff is recommending approval of this request. We have received one phone call concerning this case, and that was from an individual just wanting more information about this particular request, and I'll stand by in case you have questions for me later.
Thank you. Now, open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak, Ordinance 36-22, please come forward.
Good evening. Neil Montgomery for the record, representing the property owners. We do concur with the staff report and would seek your approval. As Mr. Struve indicated, two of the developers are in the process, and they can't get final approval until you all approve this, and they're seeking multifamily. That multifamily is consistent with both the Pine Island Road District and the multifamily comp plan in Lee. If you have any questions, we're here to respond.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone else wishing to speak on Ordinance 36-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 36-22?
Motion to approve Ordinance 36-22.
Is there any council discussion? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight ayes, motion carried.
Okay, we'll move on to Ordinance 33-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 33-22, an ordinance amending the city of Cape Coral five-year schedule of capital improvements for fiscal years 2022 through 2026, providing severability and an effective date.
Good afternoon, Mr. White.
Good afternoon. For the record, Wyatt Daltrey, planning team coordinator of the city's planning division. My credentials may be obtained in the city clerk's office. I do not have a presentation for you today, as this is just an ordinance, purpose of which is to update the schedule for capital improvements. This is a state mandated action. We're supposed to do this annually per section of Florida statutes, Chapter 163. So that's really all we're doing, purpose of which presumably is to provide better information for the public, just to know what the future schedule of capital improvements are. This is derived from the Capital Improvement Plan, which is a segment of your budget. You update this annually. There are no changes. It's just really a reflection of what's in our budget today. I'll stand by for any questions.
Thank you. I now open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on Ordinance 33-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 33-22?
Motion to approve 33-22.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion from council? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Eight ayes, motion carried.
We'll move on to Ordinance 31-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 31-22, an ordinance providing for a referendum to consider the adoption of an economic development ad valorem tax exemption, providing for purpose, intent, and authority to grant such exemptions, calling a referendum to grant such exemptions to be held in conjunction with the general election scheduled for November 8, 2022, providing a ballot title and summary for the referendum, providing severability and an effective date.
Good evening.
Hello, hang on one second here. Okay, there you go. Thank you very much. Connie Behren, Assistant City Manager. This ordinance tonight is to authorize placing this item on the ballot for the decision of the voters. It does not enable the program itself. That will come back to the city council to enact if the voters do approve this in November. I just wanted to quickly go over the presentation that I provided to you at a committee of the home meeting, just a few, about a month is our goal. So, the economic development ad valorem tax exemption. This is basically a tool that's provided through the Florida Constitution. There are several cities, communities throughout the state of Florida that have the economic development ad valorem tax exemption. What it does, it does provide exemptions to developers of specific projects, and it offers a limited exemption from the payment of your property taxes. And there are certain restrictions that we build into the economic development ad valorem tax exemption. As I noted initially, this has to be approved by the voters. There are certain businesses that will be qualified for this exemption, manufacturing, technology, light industry, those types of businesses would be the ones that would be eligible for this if they're looking to invest in the community. Basically, the way that the program will work is, if you have an eligible person or business, they will apply to the city manager. The city manager will review the application, and if it meets all the parameters of what we are looking for, then he will send that completed application to the property appraiser. Now, the property appraiser will look at the city's ad valorem tax revenue. They will see what our ad valorem tax revenue is due to us in a specific year. They will look at what we may have already committed to any other business, any other exemptions we may have granted, and then they will estimate the amount of revenue that would be lost to the city should this exemption be granted. If it falls within all of the parameters that council has approved, then this particular application would come back to city council for approval. The criteria, there are basically three tiers. It's that a business can fall under. Those three tiers, it's mostly related to the average private sector wage, the annual private sector wage. So depending on exactly what the business or developer will bring to the table, will determine how much they are eligible for and the amount of time that they are eligible. So if you look at, just as an example, just with tier one, if they meet 100 percent of the average annual private sector wage, and they're creating 10 manufacturing jobs or making a capital investment of 10-plus million dollars, then they would be eligible for an exemption for a period of five years. So it goes from five years all the way up to 10 years. And just depending on which category, which tier, the developer business would fall under. And the maximum exemption would be 50 percent. So what's eligible is 100 percent. With your new business, 100 percent of the assessed value of all improvements and tangible personal property. And it tends to get a little more detailed than what I've got in this particular presentation. But again, all of those details will be worked out and approved by council. A qualifying expansion of an existing business, so again, up to 100 percent of the assessed value of the added improvements, and also any net increase on the tangible personal property. The financial restrictions, this particular plan would have an annual aggregate amount of $2 million each fiscal year. That's the most that the city could forego in property tax revenue, not a dollar more. The economic development exemption would. The economic development exemption would sunset after 10 years. So it's not something that would continue on and on and on unless city council would want to take it back out to the voters to authorize it again. So again, the only thing we're asking for tonight is for council to approve this ordinance and to put it on the ballot in November for the voters to consider and determine whether or not this is something they would like to offer.
Okay, now I'll open up public hearing. If there's anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 31-22, please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion to approve ordinance 31-22?
So moved. Second?
Second.
All right. And any council discussions? Councilmember Welsh?
Yes, I just had one question. I know that this is set to go on the November 8 ballot. We previously, I believe, set three more items to go on the ballot. What's our limit for the primary election to get on the ballot? I don't want to create an extra one if we've already put too many on there.
You've approved two other items, I believe, that are going on the primary. And then this one would be going on in November.
Okay, so we're not overdoing what we're allotted by adding this one.
There was an allowance for up to six on the primary and one on the general.
Okay. Okay, any other questions or comments? Councilmember Hayden?
Connie, just moving forward with this, if a voter wants to learn a little bit more about this, the tier schedule, how this will work, will be available on our website or is available on our website?
It will be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussions? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Thank you. We'll move on to ordinance 25-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title.
Ordinance 25-22, an ordinance amending City of Cape Coral ordinance 67-21 as amended by ordinance 3-22, which adopted the City of Cape Coral operating budget, revenues, and expenditures, and capital budget for fiscal year 2022 by increasing the total revenues and expenditures by a total of $6,867,106, approving the creation of three positions, reclassification of three positions, and increasing the number of regular full-time positions in the financial services, human resources, and public works departments, providing severability and an effective date.
Thank you. Mr. Mason?
Sir, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mark Mason, Financial Service Director. Again, we've set up this, okay, something happened. Again, we've set up to do these budget amendments four times a year. This would be the second one, generally recognizing transactions in this case between December and the end of February. And so we've amended it once earlier in January, and this will be the second one. Overall, as was read into the record, we're increasing the overall budget by $6,867,000 or 0.7% from budget amendment number one. The lion's share of the adjustments were in the special revenue funds, and specifically between two special revenue funds, both the solid waste fund as well as the sunsplash special revenue fund. The solid waste fund, when we brought it over from an agency fund, we budgeted it at about $9 million. The actual cost of solid waste is closer to 18 million, so we're grossing it up to the actual cost of the solid waste contract as well as the assessments that we collect on an annual basis. For sunsplash, since we're contracting out sunsplash, and as we told you when we were adopting the budget last year, that if the contract went through and the agreement went through, then we would come back and we would amend the budget and take out, you know, the majority of the budget that's associated with sunsplash. So that's what that does, and it's about a $3 million decrease, which we'll show you in here in just a second. So we're recognizing two grants that were awarded during the period, $10,000 for police and a little over $19,000 for fire. Again, as I mentioned regarding solid waste, we're upfunding it by $9.6 million. Water park decreasing the overall budget by $3 million. There was, I think, a question came through on your ecomments regarding the water park. Just one of the things to recognize that in Florida, all governmental agencies are required to balance their budgets. So revenues must equal expenditures. Regardless of what makes up the revenues or what makes up the expenditures, they must equal each other. And so when you're decreasing the revenues on the water park, you're also decreasing the expenditures, so you would end up balancing the budget. So charges and for miscellaneous were, these amounts of both CDB and G and ship are recaptured funds, so when we sell a property that we had funded through a loan agreement, we recognize those funds as recaptured funds, and then we put them back into the system for doing the same purpose, doing loans in the future. In addition, we've, in development services, we're ratifying personnel that you approved on 58, resolution 58-22. This is just simply a ratification, put them into the budget through the ordinance. In addition, in the general fund, we see the decrease in the transfer out to the water park for support, so, you know, we're taking out everything that had to do with the water park after the contract went into effect. On government services, where we show this general pension plan true-up, what generally during, in many cases, at the end of the year, when we do the actuarial evaluations for our pension plans, we might, it might be determined that we owe a little bit more in the pension contributions than was originally planned for in the budget and what we've actually transferred. And so in this particular circumstance, this has happened again in this particular year, this is just one portion of it. For the general fund, there's other charges in several of them on pages in other portions of the operating funds to where we make up for this differential on the actuarial valuation. I've spoken with the actuary regarding this matter, and we're going to make an adjustment going into next fiscal year, which we'll talk to you about during the budget process. But this will avoid these kind of things happening to us in the future if we change how we're contributing more on an actual payroll basis versus the anticipated actuarial basis, which is what we've been doing in the past. In addition, in the special revenue funds and the building fund, we're, again, ratifying the positions that we've added during the, I think in February, as well as we're adding some additional office space, reconfiguration of office space in the building area. General fund, correction, parks and rec programs and the golf course, we're showing up again in the pension plan, and we're ratifying the resolution 36-22, which added the crane truck being paid from solid waste. And then capital project funds were, these are some changes. We had originally put the golf course, cart pass project in the golf course fund, but it's more appropriate in a capital project fund, so this is a movement between funds, which is required for us to do coming forward as part of the budget amendments. Charter school maintenance, again, the same thing applies. We originally put it into the general fund, but it's more appropriate, again, into the, we have a fund in capital projects for charter schools. So we've moved it into that particular fund as we will others, other expenses that will be taken care of during the course of the preparation of next year's budget. Utilities, again, general pension plan true-up and the ratification of personnel for stormwater, internal service funds, risk, and all the other internal service funds was taken in adjusting for the general pension plan contributions. So this is a little bit different. We've, we're looking at trying to streamline and create some efficiencies in how we've been adding positions. We've been doing it, generally speaking, through an item on the agenda. However, it's all part and parcel of the overall adjustments to the budget. So we've created a system and an additional attachment to the budget amendment that shows the changes that we're, when we're adding a position, when we're identifying a position that's, and we provide the information associated with the classification, the compensation for that particular position, as well as description of the position. So all of that is included within the attachment C to the ordinance. So in this case, we're decreasing the overall number of staff in the water park by 61.67 FTEs. The reclassifications for the design, construction manager, the two project managers, this is for public works. We reclassified a position and now have split the remaining position into two managers for one FTE. So we've actually saved some money on this one. Planning manager to a principal planner, and then one construction inspector plus one FTE for that one as well. Internal auditor, the audit manager, there's no change in the FTE and no change budgetarily for this. It's simply a change in title, and we've identified what that is for the reclassification. Government services, we've, during the course of the year, we may need certain contract interns. So when we put this into the budget, into government services, we said, well, you know, five FTEs for interns, but, you know, you could do the intern if you have salary savings as opposed to increasing the budget for the intern itself. So these positions are available for someone who might want to bring in an intern during the course of the year, as long as they have salary savings to cover it. For the next several positions, this all has to do with the charter school, charter school support. It's part of the transition plan, I think, that we've discussed with the city council over the course of the past year. And so we're bringing on all the support staff into the city, into the city government, and the charter school will pay us back for those particular positions for the time that they're actually working on the charter school. And so we're bringing on an accounts payable specialist, the business manager at the charter schools would come in as a, or in this particular case, we'd be adding a senior budget analyst and three FTEs for maintenance specialists. We'd also be bringing onboard a human resources manager, an accounting assistant, as well as a payroll assistant to add to the system for the charter school. So we would control the positions for the charter school. We would do all the back office work for the charter school. These are the things that we've talked to you about as far as the charter schools, as well as worked with the charter school system to put this into place. And so by adding these FTEs today, we're looking at, the funding portion of this would start July 1. So you'd be looking at the final three months of the year, because the transition would occur at the charter school's fiscal year as opposed to ours. And so any changes, any personnel that would be coming over from the charter school system would come over effectively somewhere right around July 1. Oops. And so that pretty well covers it.
Thank you, Mr. Mason. I will now open up the public hearing. Is there anyone wishing to speak on ordinance 25-22? Please come forward. Seeing none, public hearing is now closed. Is there a portion, I'm sorry, is there a motion to approve ordinance 25-22?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any council discussion? Councilmember Hayden?
Mark, just a point of clarification, the number of FTEs at the water, decreasing the water park staff, that included the accumulation of the contract employees, I'm assuming?
That is all the contract employees, correct.
Wanted to make this. Thanks. That's it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Nelson?
Aye.
Shepherd?
Aye.
Tate?
Aye.
Welsh?
Aye.
Cosden?
Aye.
Gunter?
Aye.
Hayden?
Aye.
Long?
Aye.
Eight eyes, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Moving on to item 10B introductions, ordinance 32-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 32-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral comprehensive plan by amending the future land use map from commercial slash professional to single-family land use for property described as block three, lots eight through 27, Coral Point Unrecorded Subdivision. Property located at 1642 through 1768 Coral Point Drive, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 4, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 34-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 34-22, an ordinance amending the City of Cape Coral official zoning district map of all property within the limits of the City of Cape Coral by rezoning property described as lots 22 through lots 25 of Del Pine Manor, an unrecorded plat lying in section five, township 44 South, range 24 East, Lee County, Florida, as more particularly described herein, from general, commercial, and two-family conservation, Lee County designations, to commercial corridor zone. Property is located at 1356 Del Pine Drive, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 4, 2022.
Is there any council or staff discussion? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 37-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 37-22, an ordinance naming the Gator Circle Neighborhood Park, Gator Trails Park, providing severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 4, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to ordinance 40-22. Madam City Clerk, please read the title, set the public hearing date.
Ordinance 40-22, an ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement with Madison Square LLC, a Florida limited liability company, for the lease of a portion of property owned by the City of Cape Coral. Property located at 4816 Chester Street, providing for severability and an effective date. The public hearing will be May 4, 2022.
Any discussion by staff or council? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 11, reports. Councilmember Nelson, report.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to just say that I attended, actually, I participated in a Zoom meeting with the facilitators from the Southwest Florida Resiliency Group that we are a part of and many other municipalities are a part of. And I learned that Lee County has put their participation on hold, and the reason is because Lee County, Collier County, and Charlotte County are all working on their own individual vulnerability assessments, which is part of receiving funding from the state's coastal resiliency funding that became available last year from our governor. And so I just wanted to point that out to you all. In full disclosure, you know, I was asked if the City of Cape Coral wanted to continue to participate, and I said that, you know, I would reach out to Lee County, and I did speak with Roger Desjarais, our county commissioner, who educated me on the reasoning that Lee County has paused on this, because they're going to wait probably for at least another 12 to 18 months to get the results of their vulnerability assessment for all of Lee County in terms of sea level rise. And I just wanted to bring this up to council. You know, do I think that we necessarily need to pause? It's hard to say, because we've only had one meeting with the compact, and there were a lot of people in that room, and I think the compact is still kind of trying to form and figure out what its role is going to be in terms of joining with all the counties together, all the municipalities together to speak the same language regarding coastal resiliency. So I can't really answer if I feel we should pause, because I don't know that the group has completely formed what its goal is. So I would just ask that you all let me keep you apprised as this sort of develops, and if I feel at any point that, you know, we need to pause as well, I will certainly bring this to council and let you all decide. But I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention, that, you know, this compact was formed a year and a half ago, and in concept, it's great. There is one on the east coast that has been in formation for 10 years, and they work together on coastal resiliency projects and also individually, based on their individual needs. So I just wanted to bring this forward to you all and just say that I'll continue to report back, and if at any- to report back, and if at any time I feel we need to take a pause, I'll certainly mention that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd, report.
No report.
Councilmember Tate, report.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I wanted to congratulate the cardboard boat races and the Rotarians. That was a fabulous event. I attended the TDC meeting, and I wanted to remind everyone that the funding request for Beach and Shoreline, funding is tomorrow, and I know our staff is ready, so I'm looking forward to some great activity there. I attended the CRA utility box unveiling. It was absolutely great. It's beautiful artwork. If you haven't been down there, I would suggest that everybody goes down. And I participated in the panel for the Royal Tom Association of Realtors on affordable housing, and Amy Yearsley did a presentation for the Realtors. There was approximately 150 people in the room, and Amy did an outstanding job. I wanted to thank her for her presentation. And that's the end of my report. Thank you for allowing me to be remote.
Thank you. Councilmember Welsh, report.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to report, I also, since the last meeting, attended the 50th anniversary celebration of the Cape Coral Construction Industry Association. They've been a big supporter of the city and of construction here for the past 50 years. It was wonderful to see all the past presidents have their time to speak about the challenges that they worked through during their terms. I also was with Councilmember Tate at the utility box beautification unveiling. I drive by those boxes every day and think it is a wonderful asset to the city to have art shown like that, and I only hope that we can do more of it and maybe bring it into our parks as well. Aside from that, I had the Parks and Rec Advisory Board meeting on Monday. They're a great group who want to see our parks thrive and, and have come up with some great concepts and things that we're going to be working on, bringing forward in the future. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cosden, report.
No report.
Councilmember Hayden.
Reminder to people that they can purchase tickets to the Mayor Scholarship banquet coming up on May 17th at Palmetto Pine. Tickets are available on their website, capecoralmayorscholarship.com. It's significant this year, it's the 40th anniversary of them awarding scholarships. They've awarded 600 so far, and over $700,000 worth, 10 individuals this year are extremely qualified, the 10 seniors plus. For the first time, they'll be awarding scholarships to deserving students from the tech schools. So, you know, Mayor Scholarship Fund is recognizing what the rest of us are, that specialized workforce is important for our area, and they want to honor the kids that are seeking expertise and traits. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you. My report's fairly short tonight. On 4/8, I attended the raising of the Ukraine flag at Eco Park to recognize the atrocities that are taking place in Ukraine and support the citizens there and the devastation that they're experiencing. Also, that same day, I attended the Cape Coral Construction Industries 50th Anniversary Party and issued a proclamation. Didn't realize that their conception was almost as long as the city, about 51 years. So that was kind of surprising. So it's a great organization, as Councilmember Welsh had mentioned, and it's always a good partner for our city. Also, the next day, I attended the Pizza and Pals, the fundraising event for the Cape Coral Animal Shelter, and on April 11th, I attended a fundraising event for Veterans Organization, Cocktails in the Cape. Madam City Attorney, do you have a report?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. As this council is aware, the city is a party to a lawsuit entitled Waste Pro of Florida Inc. versus City of Cape Coral, case number 22CA001123. Accordingly, pursuant to Section 286.011, subsection 8 of the Florida statutes, I am requesting that the city council convene in a closed attorney-client session to discuss settlement negotiations and litigation expenditures. The session will be scheduled for Tuesday, April 26th, 2022, at 3:30 PM, if council approves.
Thank you. Any problems with council on that particular date and time? Again, that's Tuesday, April 26th, at 3:30 PM. Okay. Thank you, Madam City Attorney. Yes, ma'am. Mr. City Manager.
No report, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Okay. Time and place of the future meeting, as we just discussed, Tuesday, April 26th, at 3:30 PM, we have attorney-client session, and also, we have a committee. The whole meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, at 9:00 AM here in council chambers. Is there a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
I can.
Any appeals?
Bye.
No, meeting adjourned.